Good evening, everybody. I'd like to call this October seventeenth, regular meeting of Zion City Council to order. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner McDowell.
Here.
Commissioner Fryerson.
Here.
Commissioner Fisher.
Here.
Commissioner Holmes.
Here.
Mayor McKee.
Here. Item number three, Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Brimner, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir.
All right. And we have Pastor Carlson with us from Grace Missionary Church to lead us in prayer this evening.
Good morning. God, heaven, we come to you in difficult times, political divisions, terrorists that part of the nation, high inflation, problems at the border, bothering distrust and disparity, inequity, father, the things that we face here, terrorism abroad and abroad. Father God, I pray, help us to recognize more than ever that we need you, we need you in our lives, in our hearts, in our decisions. We need, Father God, to recognize the part that you must play in life. And thank you so much. And I ask that you give us faith to believe and comfort to help us, Father, to keep us calm, give us courage to strengthen us, give us grace to be kind, to do all these things. And pray, Father God, that you help us as a nation and as a people, put our trust back in you. But thank you so much for the armed services and for our local first responders, Father. We pray to keep them safe in an increasingly dangerous violent world. And pray to help us, Father, to not be so relaxed in our own little area of calmness that we would not realize what's going on around us. And so, at this time, as we talk to the God of the universe, we would thank you for your sovereignty and all, and your providence and your great love. And I ask that we felt tonight even, Father, as our men and women who serve us well come together to make decisions, to move our wonderful community forward and to make a difference, Father. Thank you for the citizens around me representing everyone who lives in the call of their place or home. Pray, Father God, that you help us never to forget what you've done for us, never to forget what you call us to be, what you call us to do. Father God, we be able to have time and peace in our hearts and in our world. So we pray it all in Jesus' name.
Anyway, thank you, Pastor Carlson. And when you talked about peace on earth, I want to just make a kind of a quick ad lib here. Several days ago, one of my good friends and mentors passed away. His name was Jay Burgess. Jay owned Burgess Anderson and Tate, one of the founders of the company. Had been in Zion since nineteen oh three. Jay was a distinguished citizen and distinguished person, was a colonel in the army, and he would end all of his conversations with, "May there be peace on earth." And I want to, in honor of Jay and all that he's done for our community, always kind of start to end our prayer sessions with, "And may there be peace on earth," because we definitely need it. So, thank you. Item number four, agenda changes. Are there any agenda changes?
Yes. I'd like to request that we table item nine A to the next meeting to give staff proper time to put a memo that justifies the increase. And if we could also name Sonalita Bronson as Recording Secretary for closed session.
The question is, do you want to bifurcate those, split those?
I don't need to bifurcate it unless someone else does.
Okay.
I'll second the motion on both items.
All right. We have a first and a second. The motion was to table item number nine A and also name Sonalita Bronson as the Recording Secretary of this meeting. Correct?
Correct.
First and a second. We need any discussion before we call the roll? Just call the roll?
The substantive matters are open for discussion, so we need a super majority vote, and we would be eligible for discussion.
All right.
Sorry.
All right.
So I had one additional just left out. Question. In terms of November seventh, are we having a council meeting that day? Isn't that election day?
Oh, that's back in the, that's back in the commentary?
We're talking about agenda, there are agenda changes, right?
There's no election.
Yeah, we've always had.
The only, the only time we don't have it is when we're at early voting site, and it conflicts with county for early voting, but we are not, per election day, we are not voting at full location. Thank you.
All right. So, Recording Secretary, you want to call the roll on the motion?
Commissioner McDowell.
Aye.
Commissioner Fryerson.
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher.
Aye.
Commissioner Holmes.
Aye.
Mayor McKee.
Aye. Motion carries. Item number five, we have a special presentation this evening. And we have a special presentation by our own Senator Mary Edley Allen. Welcome her to Zion. She's here quite a bit, and I've got to tell you, she replaced a real fireball of spirit in Melinda Bush. But what I have found is her passion to help our community, as well as other communities, the one in which she lives, also the other communities surrounding us, has been absolutely incredible. And I'll say this, we really appreciate your effort, your energy, your passion, and your love for our city. Yes.
Okay. Well, thank you. That was very kind for the people of the community, Mary Edley Allen. And I do have the honor of representing thirty-first district that includes this wonderful city of Zion. And we've been trying to get here for a couple of months, and I'm so excited to be here to present this, actually, two certificates that are official documents that are registered with the Senate. The first one is for the city and Supervisor Neil. As you all know very well, that she is just a workforce that puts Zion in front of everything and is working day in, day out. And she most recently did the Zinnia, and she probably can share. Is it appropriate for her to come up here when I'm presenting this?
She's, she's saying, "No, but we're going to say yes."
But we did this at the Zinnia festival, but I really wanted to put it in the record and have it registered formally. Not going to read the entire thing, but I, I'm not feeling comfortable that my back is to the audience. I know it's supposed to be that way. I'm sorry, as a teacher, I wanted to be talking to you all.
You could just turn, come on this side of the podium and turn around. How about that?
My guess.
Check out the big brain on the mayor.
So I just wanted to highlight some of the really important details in here, that the city of Zion celebrated the name of Zinnia as the official flower of Zion, and it was spearheaded by none other than your Supervisor Sherri Neal. And the residents of Zion assigned a flower to call Zinnia their official flower because it connects Zion's rich heritage to the founding of Zion. And I'm going to skip down, that notably, the Zinnia is not only a historical symbol of Zion, the flower bended the community in each of the homes and its residents. We define Zion by planting Zinnia in gardens and around the city, improves the quality of living by giving people a reason to enjoy their retirement and reduce the stress. In addition to memorializing Zion's history, the Zinnia is known for its meaning joy, and its assortment of colors and sizes, which is a perfect symbol to represent Zion's unique diversity and strong sense of community. Therefore, be it by the Senate of the one-hundred-and-third General Assembly of the State of Illinois, that we recognize Zion City Council for the name of the Zinnia as their official flower. Through the Zinnia, the city of Zion is able to embrace their heritage and commitment to cultivate a beautiful community for future generations to admire. And we have further, a copy of this resolution, to then present to the Zion City Council and to Sherri as a symbol of our esteem and respect. Thank you, Sherri.
That Zion needed capital for the state of Illinois, or Zinnia, I don't think we can do nationally, because there's a lot of communities in Iowa, especially the, but that is, and so Senator Edley Allen said, "Well, this is the first snap." So she, and I totally forgot about it. And then she came to the event and said, "Well, here's the first snap." So, thank you. Billy, you were on the, on the board. Some of you guys were on the board when you guys voted again on March twentieth, two thousand and eighteen, to make the Zinnia the same flower. So I made a commitment to ten years, so I got five years to go.
Okay. I sent the announcement, it was for your beloved mayor.
Do I have to?
We had this resolution drafted. The Senate had not had any visitors on the floor. It's a really special thing to have some, to have someone come onto the Senate floor. And it happened to be the day before mayor came down to Springfield that they opened up the floor. So I quickly shot up the door and said, "My mayor's in town. I have a resolution coming. Can you please get on the floor?" And it worked out so that he could come down, that, onto the floor, and we were able to read this into the record on the Senate floor to Iowa. But I felt really, really excited today.
It's like, it was, it was kind of, sometimes, public, the Indian public sometimes, it seems, and how it's been, there's a little embarrassing thing.
I want to tell you a few things about mayor Bill. So the reason we did this resolution for him, I know, I'm not sure if you all know, but his jersey was the first jersey to be retired at Northwestern University. So this gets very long, but I want to just highlight some of the important things that the mayor, I think, there's something that I miss, if he wants to say. So, the members of the Illinois Senate wish to congratulate Billy McKinney on the occasion of the retirement of his Northwestern University basketball jersey. And the Northwestern University Athletics and Recreation and the Men's Basketball Program announced that Billy McKinney's jersey would be retired during two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four basketball season at Long Island Arena. So there's a whole bunch of statistics about him. It's one of them that I want to highlight, that he, as a veteran, rep, that he's here. He still holds the NBA rookie record for the most field goals without a miss, converting fourteen straight attempts in a thirty-point effort against the Boston Celtics. Due to his quickness, I don't know if you've ever seen it. He was nicknamed the crazed hummingbird.
That's a mistake.
Thanks for reading that publicly. Appreciate it. We didn't know that before.
Yeah. So, following his professional playing career, Billy McKinney served as an executive scout for the NBA front offices for over thirty years, becoming the first African-American front office executive in franchise history. While working as a Chicago Bull Scout, he was the only scout to watch Scottie Pippen play in the Arkhamville Field. So say that. Guiding the team to trade for Pippen in nineteen eighty-seven, importing one of the NBA's greatest dynasties with, I don't think we know this guy anymore, but he's. And Billy McKinney became the first general manager of the expansion in the Sotheby Timberlands in nineteen ninety-two, later worked as general manager for the Detroit Pistons and WBA Seattle Storm. As the record stands, wearing Milwaukee Bucks, he was instrumental in drafting the (inaudible). And then whereas, since two thousand nineteen, Billy McKinney has served as the mayor of Zion, his hometown, he remains heavily involved with the Northwestern University Men's Basketball Program, serving as the team's radio color analyst alongside Dave (inaudible).
Kenda.
Kenda, WGM. Billy McKinney will be the first student athlete in school history to have their jersey retired, and therefore, we have resolved by the Senate of the one-hundred-third General Assembly of the State of Illinois, that we congratulate Billy McKinney on his retiring of his basketball jersey at Northwestern University. And we have further resolved that a suitable copy of this resolution be presented to Billy McKinney as an expression of our esteem and respect. And that was on May fifth.
Yeah. Be sincere, be free, and be seen. Thank you. No, I, I will just say this, it was really cool to be on the Senate floor. It was quite overwhelming to be there and have all of the senators and states acknowledge me on the floor of the accomplishments that I had as a, as a student athlete at Northwestern University and what I've been able to accomplish professionally. I've always tried to represent our community in the best way possible. And I was given the opportunity, I should say, given I earned the opportunity to get an athletic scholarship and to get a good education at one of the best universities in the world. And I'm proud of that because I was the youngest of six kids that came from a single parent home, and my mother had a sixth grade education, but she always talked about the importance of getting good education. As a result of all of those steps, the thoughts and the bruises, the accomplishments, there's been a lot of disappointment, but all of it was culminated with me being back home and doing my best with this fine group behind me, our commissioners, our city's administrators, our staff, that are trying to make our community better. And as a young man, my mother told me one thing, that when you move to a city, you just don't live there. You actually sign a social contract with that city wherever you live. And while you're there during that time, you do what you can to make that place a better place to live. So she said, wherever you go, whatever you do in life, however, whatever condition you find that particular place, you make it a better place for you. I can't do that alone, and I have great support behind me. I've worked with teams, and a team that comes here all my life, but I've never worked for a better team than the people that I work with every day. And I tell them that. I tell them that. And I want to say this, for the members of our community that are so involved, that honors you, and makes some comments at the Zion Township Meeting, what you do in our community, your engagement is what makes us better. And there's a principle that says eighty percent of, twenty percent of the people in your population, or two percent, cause most of your problems. And we've got a huge population of people here that want this city to be good. And by volunteering your time and your efforts, regardless of your age, race, creed, color, nationality, national origin, you're investing in our community. And it's one of the reasons that I've always believed in, because some of the people here that I was growing up, a gentleman that I mentioned that passed away, Dave Burgess, Johnson Longing was a police officer, Ronnie Ransford, Coleman Bass, my neighbor, Dave Fisher, Phil Katz, was my little league baseball coach. So many of these people had a big hand, my actual postgrad, had a hand in raising them, and teaching me the right fundamentals, and lead up my mark, because that's where I started, that foundation and all, of believing in your community, loving your community, doing everything you can to make it better. So, Senator Allen, thank you so much for this. I didn't post it when it happened. There's been so much that has happened, but this is one of those things that I will remember for the rest of my, my day. And thank you, and the Senate for recognizing my efforts on and off the floor. And thank you, we have our county board member, Deanna Roberts, here very well. Thank you for being the photographer, noticing that she had the camera further back. If you saw the movie Tootsie, it's backing the camera up. So you looped it. Oh, my God. Let's continue with the city constantly. But again, Senator Allen, we can't thank you enough for what you do as Dean of Roberts, what you do for our community. And we talked about this afternoon, with Commissioner Fryerson and the University of Illinois extension, and sharing there with their supervisor, partnership, is what makes us all better. It's what makes us a community. So, of all the challenges that we have, if we face them together and on a united front, we help to come in and protect.
All right. Moving on to item number six is citizens' comments. We have W.C. Brimner, who'd like to make some comments. He's here just a second.
Mayor McKinney, General Lee, Honorable citizens, first of all, no disrespect to all of the neighbors, often tough after COVID. Three items. First, favorite work of, he used to have Zion trouble, and it was discontinued, I assume because of COVID. Has been a chance of bringing that back. Satisfied with the specifically denied favor of the state council. On tenth of November seventeen seventy-five, Captain Samuel Nicholas was authorized by Continental Congress to raise two battalions of sea-gone soldiers to be known as Continental Marines. Ever since that day, new United States Marine Corps has claimed tenth of November as his or her birthday. I realize this is only October, but the next council meeting on the seventh, that's staying kind of close. I respectfully call upon the city council to certainly appropriate birthday names for the two hundred and fortyth birthday of the United States Marine Corps, to the Continental Corps in Washington, D.C. Third, last week, tenth of November, on the first page of the business session of the Chicago Tribune, there was a article about a custom truck wheel making company that moved from Grisley to Zion. It employs sixty people. It has a, a daffodil, sixty thousand square feet somewhere in town. They had a chance to move up to Wisconsin and turned it down for Zion. This is your, Commissioner Brooks, who will present this to the mayor.
Permission granted. And that's something we will definitely get framed, because that is a, we'll talk about that in our departmental commentary. Thank you, Mr. Brimner. Wow.
I hear thank you for your time. I think, of course, you want to introduce the matter, I request permission to stand down.
Permission granted, sir. All right. With no other people signing up for citizens' comments, we'll move on to item number seven, which is the consent agenda.
Approval of minutes of a regular meeting held on October third, two thousand twenty-three at seven P.M.
Is there a motion to approve the minutes? So move. Motion by Fryerson?
Second.
Second by McDowell. Madam Clerk, Madam Recording Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner McDowell.
Aye.
Commissioner Fryerson.
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher.
Aye.
Commissioner Holmes.
Aye.
Mayor McKee.
Aye. Motion carries five zip.
Bills, vouchers one four four three three zero through one four 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 one six, drawn on Huntington National Bank N.A., total three hundred and twenty-four thousand six hundred eighty-five dollars and eighty-six cents.
Is there a motion to approve the bills?
All move to approve the bills.
Second. Motion by Fisher, second by McDowell. Please call the roll.
Commissioner McDowell.
Aye.
Commissioner Fryerson.
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher.
Aye.
Commissioner Holmes.
Aye.
Mayor McKee.
Aye. Motion carries five zip.
Receive and place on file the treasurer's report for fiscal year ending April thirtieth, two thousand twenty-three.
Is there a motion?
All move to accept and place on file the treasurer's report for fiscal year ending April thirty, two thousand twenty-three.
Motion by Fisher.
Second.
Second by Holmes. Please call the roll.
Commissioner McDowell.
Aye.
Commissioner Fryerson.
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher.
Aye.
Commissioner Holmes.
Aye.
Mayor McKee.
Aye. Motion carries five zip. Item number eight, consider passing resolution as follows. Eight A, authorizing the city of Zion to intervene in a tax exemption assessment matter concerning real property located within the city of Zion, per city attorney James Visella.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Chair, Council, and Visitors. A subsidiary entity of the city of Hope, which was formerly known, or which was the acquisition entity of the Cancer Treatment Centers of America, applied to become a real estate tax exempt entity pursuant to section fifteen dash eighty-six of the Illinois Property Tax Code. This resolution that we would ask your favorable approval on would authorize us to explore and possibly defend against this action and the aforementioned application. With that in mind, I respectfully request affirmative vote on this matter to allow us to explore this matter and take all necessary steps to protect the tax base of the city of Zion.
Is there a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Fryerson and second by Fisher. Please call the roll.
Commissioner McDowell.
Aye.
Commissioner Fryerson.
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher.
Aye.
Commissioner Holmes.
Aye.
Mayor McKee.
Aye. Motion carries five zip. Item number nine will be discussion authorization and approval. Nine A, consider zoning docket twenty-three Z dash twenty in ordinance requesting a variance from section one oh two dash twenty-eight, parentheses, six, parentheses, A of the Zion Municipal Code to allow a driveway to remain in the front of a house for property at twenty-one seventeen Imus Avenue, per Director Iyantin. Planning and zoning recommends approval.
Thank you, Your Honor. Ms. Flores is seeking a variance to section one two, one two eight six A of the Zion Municipal Code to allow the driver to remain in the front of the house. It'd be a hardship to install a driveway in the rear because of the chemical hazards. And you have the user access posted to the house. Back on October fifth, twenty-one three, planning and zoning commission meeting, if everyone can approve the variance.
Is there a motion to approve the variance?
So move.
Second.
Motion by Fryerson, second by Holmes. Any discussion, questions? Please call the roll.
Commissioner McDowell.
Aye.
Commissioner Fryerson.
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher.
Aye.
Commissioner Holmes.
Aye.
Mayor McKee.
Aye. Motion carries five zip. Item number nine B, tabulation of bid, City Hall Lobby Building Department project, per Director Iyantin.
Thank you, Your Honor. The city received two bids, and only one was responsible for the City Hall Lobby and Building Department project. I listed the nine responses for reference. We all responded with a D for securitization for eighty-two thousand seven hundred and fifteen dollars. An alternative bid for the building partitions, building front partition, fifteen thousand three hundred and sixty-eight dollars. I have the recommendation to check all this, if we have a time to do it.
Is there a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Fryerson?
Second.
Second by Fisher. Any questions, comments? Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner McDowell.
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher.
Aye.
Commissioner Fryerson.
Aye.
Commissioner Holmes.
Aye.
Mayor McKee.
Aye. Motion carries five zip. Item number ten is departmental commentary. Director Iyantin?
Thank you, Your Honor. Director Roberts, that you have announced the meeting November sixth, Monday, November sixth, the leaf program that will run through December first, Friday, December first. So, mark your calendars, one, three, six.
And that leaf program, with the leaf program, again, you can go on her Witty City website and look at the leaf program, but be sure, to rake your leaves onto the parkway and not into the street. That's one of the reasons we have trouble with some of our drains when people rake their leaves into the street, and then as it rains, they go right into the drain and they cause some flooding issues. So, there's more description of that on our city website. Did we push it back last year? We've had some late fall.
Did we push it back last year? We've had some late fall weather and the leaves have been falling kind of late.
Yeah, but last year we pushed it back because of, of so much, I think it was so a lot of rain last year, but this year it's back on track.
Okay.
November 6th through December 1st. Yes.
And, go ahead.
No?
I just had some for Director Iyantin.
All right.
Um, I wasn't quick enough to the draw on the last, uh, agenda item for the tabulation of bids. Can you talk a little bit about, um, what, uh, brought the need for, uh, that bid that we're going out for?
Yeah, it's more for security reasons, uh, to enforce the building permit around the cabs, and put up a glass partition between, uh, municipal and the petition to protect the high gas pass, and the cabs down below the service center. And if you are under the fact that you're a law officer, protect that.
All right, thank you.
Yes, and part of that, getting into that discussion, of course, unfortunately, we, all we have to do is, uh, pick up our papers or read our iPads, our phones with news that's happening around the nation and around the world. And there's a lot of just crazy things happening and we're, we're trying to make sure that we protect our employees. Uh, we've also now at, at City Hall, on, when offices are closed at noon for lunch, uh, the atrium will be open, but the lobby, you can come into the lobby, but the doors will be locked, uh, just for another protection measure for our, our employees that raise some concerns about it. So, thank you for the, the thought and, uh, the work on doing that. Any other questions? All right, uh, Director Roberts is not here. Uh, I talked to him today and he has a, a bad cough. I think he's just, uh, second week of not wanting to come in and give me a little grief, but, uh, we, we wish him a speedy recovery. Uh, Chief Stre is, uh, disguised as a open seat there today, as is Chief Burke. Chief Burke is out of town for a, uh, convention and he is scheduled to get back tonight around midnight. So, we move to our Director of Finance, Chris Conway.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council. I don't have a lot of updates. Just that everything for September has been posted, so the next week you guys should have budgets and actuals to review. Any questions you have, please forward them back to me. In the meantime, we're continuing on with the comptroller, getting everything caught up.
Uh, the big question, uh, will the candy supply be refreshed in the?
It will be peanut butter Snickers tomorrow.
All right. You gotta get some important items down.
At somebody's request.
Somebody. Good Halloween candy. Administrator Nabel?
I have three things tonight. One is to give kudos to the employees that aren't here tonight, but, um, we just received notice for a $34,000 grant for some flock cameras that Sergeant Jonathan Myers has been working on in the Police Department, which may not seem like a lot, but it, there's a constant effort behind the scenes to try and supplement city funding, not just on the back of the taxpayers, but through whatever sources we can. And just in case people have not been at meetings or have not heard these in the past, um, recently we got a FEMA award for a million dollars that we're doing in partnership with the Zion Park District for some flooding and the, um, the senior center to get renovations on. So a million dollars from that. We just got a SAFER grant for the full funding for three years of four firefighters, salary and benefits. That's a $2.1 million grant. Um, that's on the heels of prior year, uh, it's called a COPS grant for the hiring of five officers fully paid for three years. That's a $2.7 million grant. Um, so just in the past couple of years, we're talking five or six million dollars of funding that we have been actively seeking, constantly seeking. That's on top of the CISA dollars that we work with the nuclear funds. Um, so I, staff is working hard behind the scenes. We don't have grant writers. We don't have that centralized. This is all done by staff in their free time while trying to do their main jobs. And, um, with the relationships that have been built through the community, through these other departments, uh, we've been very successful on that. So, uh, credit to them on, on pushing hard for that to try and make sure we get the services and the resources we need here. Um, we have, that's a little bit of a preview for October 25th. We have our next, uh, community event over at Zion Benton Township High School. We have a taxing body leaders group that, um, we all get together, superintendents, the executive directors, Park Library, myself, um, the schools, that we discuss big picture issues within the city and how we can help each other, make sure we're not, uh, doing, making redundant efforts, making sure that we have kind of unified voices, uh, to try and get things for the community going. And we, one, one of the things that's come out of this meeting is making sure we have a forum for the public to come and hear what's going on, get updates, not just at city council meetings or school board meetings or et cetera, but an opportunity to hear what's going on on a grand scale. But also we make sure that a part of that is feedback from the public that we hear. We ask questions and we get input from the public on what's going on. And then we take action steps on that to make sure that you're heard. And we update on, from the last meeting, what we implemented, what we heard, what we put in place. Um, so it's a good opportunity to get out, meet others within the community that you might not know, hear what's going on on a big scale within the community, and also provide feedback. So October 25th at 5:30 at the high school, food will be served. Um, I think the program kicks off at 6:00.
Yes.
Might be 6:30, but I think it's 6:00.
At 6:00.
Um, part of that is gonna be, um, part of my presentation on that is gonna be talking about economic development. So, Mr. Bremerner, it's timely that you bring that article. Um, and it's also timely that Cheryl Spooner is out, we have our economic development coordinator, Sonny LaBronson here, who, um, a lot of people, you might see on Facebook or hear out there what's going on in the community as far as jobs development. You just hear maybe Popeyes or you may hear just Starbucks. Um, Real Wheels is a company that, that we brought here, was a, what about two years? Two-year effort to get them here relocated, again, keeping them out of Wisconsin. Um, a lot of work, a lot of ups and downs on that. A lot of people ask why Zion and why not Wisconsin. Um, and I'm not gonna steal the mayor's thunder here if he was gonna talk about it, but when we had the ribbon cutting, announcing the opening of that, again, 60 jobs, a building across from Walmart that's been vacant for 20-plus years, their reason for coming here was the people of Zion. The relationships that we, we built with them, the, um, riding the ups and downs together and getting, leaning on each other through, in building that support structure with them, they already fit with the type of people that we have in Zion, the personalities we have, the, the drive we have. And they saw that and they said, this is where I wanna be. So it's not, even though we have high taxes and we have other challenges that we have, uh, within the community, we are still that good community. We are where people wanna be once they get here and see and meet the people. Everybody here and everybody at the community events are part of that, but that's why Zion versus other places, we still have that. And we work hard on that on a regular basis. You know, that was, that was a, a big project. That was a multimillion dollar investment from them into Zion. Um, more residents, more, or more jobs, more ripple effect of economics. Those are, those employees are gonna go to the Starbucks. They're gonna go eat at our restaurants. They're gonna get gas at the gas station down the road. Um, we're, we're working on a large one in Trumpet Park still that's been three and a half, four years. Um, so there's a lot going on out there and I'll, I'll be talking more details at the community event, but there's a lot going on out there that people don't necessarily know about or hear about, but that are good things to celebrate and that we're working on every day to try and bring to Zion and grow our tax base and give those opportunities to our community. So, please come on out and, and hear what's going on, not just from the city, but all the other taxing bodies as well.
Just one question. Uh, the COPS, great, you said COPS, plural.
C-O-P-S.
All right.
It's, it's an acronym for something.
Every time I hear COPS plural, I think about the Beverly Hill Cop, nine or 10 cops plural.
Oh, I thought you were gonna say the frozen custard place up in, uh, Oak Creek or whatever. That's what I think when I hear COPS.
Actually, that was Trading Places.
Oh, yes.
Nine or 10 cops before I made my move. All right, Commissioner McDowell?
Yeah, I guess I just wanted to, uh, also mention those grants that we just got from, um, for the flock cameras and then, uh, what Sergeant Myers did. Um, it does take quite a bit of work to write grants and it's a specialty and, um, kudos to him and also, uh, Battalion Commander, uh, Battalion Chief Troy, who, uh, secured that safety grant for us. So that, those are really, um, big items for the city. Um, we had the walkthrough time, uh, la-last week and it really went well. Um, getting to know a little bit more of, of the people that helped get this city started. And we do stand on some, um, pretty broad shoulders that, uh, helped build the city up. And Mayor, I'm just a little curious, um, about the gray hummingbird. So maybe you can expound on that.
Craze?
Craze.
Craze hummingbird?
Craze, craze.
Gray now, okay, craze, yeah. Yeah. Well, you know I'm crazy already, but, uh, an Italian fan gave me that nickname because of the way I play. It's just all over the court. And, uh, so that name came up. Just, it's like a hummingbird, just darting in.
And now gray hummingbird would be accurate, wouldn't it?
Uh, now it is, evolved hummingbird. Take your pick. But, uh, I also wanna say about the flock cameras. What those do to our community, they, they are a, it's a technology that provides additional safety measures for our community. If there's an incident in town, those cameras are located at just, at different strategic points throughout the city, uh, so that if a car is involved, that car will be picked up on the flock camera. And other communities have the flock cameras and we've been able to solve some major crimes through the flock cameras. So those are another way that we've been able to increase our police force without adding additional, uh, people on the payroll. Those cameras are invaluable. And we also have a, a, a new device along with that. It's a, a shot spotter. If there is, it's, that's not the term for it, but if there are shots fired, uh, the police can detect in 30 seconds where it comes from. And they can respond to that point and also have an idea of who in that community in that area might have guns or what the background of people that might be firing guns in that area. And unfortunately, we had some of that happen in, in my neighborhood, I wanna say about a week ago. And I was pulling into my garage and as soon as the shots were fired, we had officers that were there investigating. So those are tools that we're having our community that has helped us reduce crime by 10% in the last year, but also to make our community safer. So, thank you for Sergeant Myers and, uh, Sergeant Troy for the, I mean Battalion Chief Troy for writing those grants. It does take time, but it's, it's way, a great way for us to not use taxpayers' money. And if Ray Roberts were here, he would tell you, he would be able to tell us. And I was hoping you'd expound on that, on how many grants we have, how much money, grant money we've used to repair streets and alleyways, uh, within our city.
He had, he gave a report on that probably five or six months ago, I wanna say, but over the past 10 years with, um, I wanna say it was about 500 or $600,000 of tax funds, we were able to leverage that into 11 million dollars of grants for street projects, for federal, state, uh, motor fuel tax, uh, grants. Um, so we, we got 11 or 12 million dollars worth of street replacement for, uh, $600,000 of tax funds that went toward streets, which is an insane ratio compared to a lot of places. So, we're trying to, we, we become masters of, of pinching the pennies and stretching the dollars.
Know where to find the money, absolutely. Commissioner first?
Um, I'll echo the Real Wheels. Uh, I was able to attend the ribbon cutting. Uh, that is, uh, amazing story that they have and, uh, glad that they chose to stay here in Zion. Uh, so that is a very big win. And we gotta, you know, take them when we can get them and celebrate the wins that we get. Uh, so that was definitely, uh, one to put in the cap. Um, also, I was listening to, uh, a podcast recently. It was talking about, uh, this is going back to economic development, and it was talking about how art spurs economic development within a community. Um, and I forget the exact number, but, um, when people come out for, uh, like shows and events and things like that, they spend about $38 per person, uh, at surrounding businesses. And that doesn't include, uh, the price that it takes to go to, uh, to the event. Um, and so I was thinking about that in a small way because we were able to do, um, movie in the park for the summer. We also have concerts in the park. Uh, and those are events where when people come out, they stop at Domino's or they stop at Little Caesar's or they stop at one of the grocery stores to pick up different snacks and things like that. Um, and so we wanna see more of that. We wanna be able to provide people with, you know, activities and outlets. Not everything has to cost a lot of money, but even when you bring people outdoors, um, it helps spur along with the rest of business within Zion. Um, and so we're glad that people show up. We'd like to hear more about, you know, things that you would like to see. Uh, we wanna work behind the scenes like David mentioned, Administrator Nabel, um, to make sure that we can, you know, leverage where we can, uh, and do the most with the little that we have. So, thank you.
Yeah, and to piggyback on that, if you come to the event, uh, on the 25th at the high school, there's a survey that's gonna be given out of all the things that, uh, have happened in Zion within all the different activities and events. And they're gonna do a survey on how you heard about it, if you attended it, and, uh, what you thought of the event. And as we looked at the, the list, it actually filled two pages on both sides of the list of everything that goes on within our city. And so we, we do a lot here. And the library, uh, the Park District have so many events. And it's one of the things that's been really attractive about the city from the time I've moved here, is the access to the, the Park District. We're at an event, uh, at the Park District today with the University of Illinois Extension Program and their agricultural program. And we have great facilities and we have great leaders with those other taxing bodies that are making sure that our residents have the resources to be able to go places and do things. And, and one of the things that we are also working on is trying to get broadband, uh, Wi-Fi service within our community. That was part of our conversation with our leaders group. So, we, behind the scenes, we're working hard for our, our residents to improve our city and to make sure people have access to the resources, uh, that they, and services that they need.
Can I do a small quote?
Yes, you, you may.
So, as the mayor reminded me, uh, we did attend a sit-down with University of Illinois Extension. And so they're a land-grant college, uh, based in, uh, lower Illinois, but they also have a presence here, uh, in Lake County. Uh, and they've been partnering with us on a series of events. So, if you look around town, the library, they have a seed library that they, uh, started this year. They've done a lot of food programming. Uh, we've worked with them to, uh, provide healthy nutrition classes for the summer program and the after-school program we did last year. Uh, they're also responsible for 4H. Uh, and so when you're talking with your school board members, uh, and staff and things like that, and you're looking for, you know, these are services that are brought in that will be free to the community, um, that our kids can take advantage of. Um, we just have to, uh, be strategic, be intentional, uh, and say yes. Uh, but they, they wanna get in. They wanna provide the services and the education to the students, uh, and give them that spark and give them a path for, uh, a different career. Uh, there were two master gardeners that were, uh, recruited out of the Zion area. Uh, and so there's a lot of positive events going on. Uh, they have some programs also with, uh, Harmon Park. Um, so, again, keep us accountable, keep your, you know, all of your other board members accountable, uh, and make sure that we're working hard for you to bring in programs that, uh, are meaningful for, for the kids and the families in this community.
All right. Uh, Commissioner Holmes?
So, um, I used to enjoy riding that Zion trolley. I don't know if it was, uh, through the city or through the Park District. Somebody speak to Mr. Bremerner's comments?
Sure. Um, for those that remember, we used to have the trolley that would go through the downtown area, through different areas. Um, it wasn't just COVID. It, the, the trolley was actually purchased, I believe from Florida.
Yes.
Uh, it was an open-air trolley designed for warmer climates, um, than, than what was in Zion. Um, and it was, it was probably 20 years old, 20 years ago. And, um, what happened is the, the, the maintenance on that and the parts weren't even able to be obtained anymore. And the cost became, we just couldn't justify the cost of trying to keep that up and going. Um, the, the cost for a trolley that was appropriate for us was way too large, especially when we were in a situation financially at the city where we were just trying to keep. we were just trying to keep staff employed, keep services at a, at a standard level and not lose service, we couldn't justify the cost of continuing to maintain nor replacing, um, that trolley, so, um, I think it was one of those that kinda ended up in the city's hands, but didn't start with the city, but that was before, before my history here, um, did it start at the city?
It did start at that one.
Okay, so, um, we, we haven't talked about bringing that back because we're still not out of the woods on, uh, we're a lot better off financially than we were as far as staying afloat, but we still have a pension liability, we still have infrastructure needs, streets, things like that, that we need to prioritize for funding, but that's the, kind of, the history of how it, literally the trolley fell apart and, um, was, was not maintained and, and continued.
All right, Commissioner Fisher.
Uh, no, I don't have anything for this meeting tonight, um, everybody have a, a great Halloween, that's coming up.
All right, and that will lead me into, uh, announcements, on October twenty-fifth, as Administrator Nabel talked about, from five-thirty to about eight o'clock at the high school, we have our community engagement meeting, and this is like our eighth, is it like our eighth meeting?
Sounds about right.
We've had about eight of these, so.
Fifty-eight somewhere.
It, uh, provides our residents an opportunity to talk with all of the leaders of the taxing bodies and provide us input. We profess that we don't have all the answers and sometimes there's an idea that a resident has that we can implement, and we've done that, or sometimes residents will make a suggestion and, and we've already, we're already doing it, so we can inform our residents of everything that's going on collectively to the city, and with all the taxing bodies, I've gotta say this, uh, that we are the only community that is doing this, and some of our, our state reps, our congresspeople, judges that have come through here that have attended this event have made that comment, of all the communities in Illinois, they haven't seen anything like this, so we are trying to communicate, all of us, because we share all the same issues, it's about servicing our residents and making sure that we can do everything to make this a great place to live, uh, work, and to play, so October twenty-fifth, five-thirty, there will be food, and six o'clock, the meeting starts. October twenty-sixth, uh, make sure that you come out to Oktoberfest, the second year of Oktoberfest will be outside of West School, and that's been put on by one of our residents, Beverly Stackhouse, who came with, with this idea with, uh, what do they call those, hay rides and bonfires and food being cooked out right out on, on the boulevard at West, uh, outside of West School, that is October twenty-sixth, from five o'clock to probably nine o'clock or so, so it was a great event last year.
Five to eight.
Five to eight, Mary Lou and the Esther crew will be out there making sure everybody parks in the right place and keeping the mayor in line, so, but it's a great. Yeah. Glad, all of our city employees say the same thing. Uh, but come on out to, it's, it's another opportunity for our residents to, to get to know each other and know that there are a lot of fun things happening in Zion, and then on October twenty-seventh, we have the Halloween Trail of Treats at Shiloh Park from four o'clock to six o'clock, uh, you, all you have to do is, uh, drive your car through Shiloh Park and it's, uh, so beautifully lit with Halloween decorations, do the same thing during Christmas, uh, that, uh, people can come out and just drive through and get handed candy by all the different groups in Zion and businesses, our coalition for health and communities will have an event, and even some of our staff will be out there in costume, believe it or not, that's always fun. Yeah, I'm looking at you, Dave.
Are you gonna stick your crazy hummingbird?
Ooh, yeah, that, that, I, I might not be a, yeah, craze hummingbird costume, that's next. And October twenty-ninth, uh, from two PM to five PM, Zion Trick or Treat, and all residents that wanna participate in that, if they will put their lights on or if they have decorations to let people that they engage with trick-or-treating, and I can recall that as such a fun activity as a, as a young man, uh, not taking ba- uh, bags, but pillowcases, that go all throughout town to make sure I had candy that would last for months. Uh, November third, there's an event at the high school, it's a pumpkin smashing, and, uh, I don't have all the information on that, does anyone have? We just, uh, I. Yeah, there was a flyer that will go out, oh, if I had my phone, it's a pumpkin smashing event at the high school, and it's so that, uh, people will be able to dispose of their pumpkins without putting them in the landfill, but as we're talking to the organizers of the event today, it's a great way to get any frustrations out on a pumpkin and not get in trouble, and of course, still coming out of the pandemic, I think we're still seeing that a lot of people are adjusting to being around people again, so this is a good way to get any kind of frustrations you have, take it out on a, a pumpkin in an environmentally friendly way.
Yep, November third, four to seven, at Zion Benton Township High School, that is at the, uh, Kenosha Campus.
Kenosha Campus.
Yes.
But, but, the, the time again, four to seven?
Four to seven.
Four to seven, pumpkin smashing, I plan to be there.
Yep.
And then November seventh, at seven PM, we have a Zion City Council meeting, and the last item that I wanna talk about is, uh, our senator was here, Mary Edley-Adlin, for our Spanish-speaking residents that want to learn English, she has put in place free classes at the high school on Tuesdays and Thursday nights, I'm gonna put something up on our, our, our website and on my personal Facebook page to get some of our Spanish-speaking residents that aren't comfortable with speaking English, there are free classes at the high school, two nights a week, and I think that's terrific because one of the things that we've been wanting to do, uh, thirty-eight percent of our population is Spanish-speaking, and we're trying to make sure that we not only connect with all of our residents, but we engage and start to create events that reflect the diversity in our community. With that, uh, item number twelve is, uh, their motion to go into closed session.
I'll make the motion.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, yes.
Um, would you mind, um, for the open meeting deck, just for the record, for our recording secretary, congratulations, uh, can we give the reasons as to why we want a closed session?
You may proceed.
Such as, um, and I'm sure that this was for the motion of.
Correct.
Mr.?
Yes.
Um, pending improbable and, uh, or imminent litigation, sale or personal real estate, collective bargaining, legal counsel, per and person L. Um, would those be the reasons that you were wanting to mention?
That would be correct.
Yes, so, uh, we'll be in closed session and, um, yes, and then we'll come out in adjourn, but you don't have to stay, uh, 'cause there won't be any action after closed session, but we do would thank everyone for coming out tonight. Section by McDowell. Because I was talking. In other words, you said Zipit.com, man, right? I get it. Just flubbing, craze hummingbird, here I am. But, uh, really wanna thank, uh, just.
Commissioner McDowell?
We need a roll call.
Go ahead.
Commissioner Pryerson.
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher.
Aye.
Commissioner Holmes.
Aye.
Mayor McKinnon.
Aye, you're gonna make me lose my mind up in here, but again, uh, thank everyone for coming out, we appreciate the participation and being informed what, uh, going on with the Zion City Council. Have a safe drive home and we'll see you at some of these events.